We have any motions? Congressman Jones? You're on mute.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's more of a future motion, and I guess I didn't really do my homework. Where do we stand on the agenda on Facebook for our meetings? Because several days ago, I looked in that 2014 agenda was still on there, and it just doesn't sit well with me, and I don't know how it can sit well with the rest of you. Something sat there for six years, and no one has brought it up. Now, it's either unimportant, and if it is, I'll drop it. But I think it needs to be addressed and make us look professional, not the same agenda showing up six years in a row. Now, maybe no one looks at it but me, and I'm looking for input, feedback.
Well, the answer tonight is the same answer I gave you last week or last meeting. We're still waiting for the corrections to be made on the website, and that's taken a little bit of time. So I appreciate your staying on top of it, but that's where it's at. Yeah.
And I guess I'll ask the other six of you. Give them another month. Whoever is in charge of that, I don't even know who's in charge of it. But another month is going to be our next month, September 7th. I'm going to make a motion that we find someone else, either pay clerk of court Anne Forrest to do it, or Kathy Moore to do it, or my daughter Natalie, she could do it. Give me the password. I could probably delve into it. So September 7th, if this isn't resurrected, I'm going to make a motion. Maybe we won't get a second, but so that's where I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you had some? Mayor, you got a comment?
Not a comment, just go over a few different items that we were going to request suspension on this evening.
Okay.
Would you like me to cover that now, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are requesting suspension of ordinance 2083. That is the ordinance amending last year's budget ordinance, which was 1984, and also ordinance 2078. And that was just a housekeeping item to change fund numbers and allow us to appropriate the $366,000 that we received from the CARES Act funding to help pay for coronavirus-related expenses. That is obviously grant money that we are receiving. We all know that the shortfall we're experiencing in the city's budget right now. So I think we can all agree that that is a necessity to suspend and pass this evening so that that is available. We are also requesting suspension of ordinance 2084. The reason for that is so that it does not hold up the $14 million project that is currently ongoing at the Water Pollution Control Center. If you recall, we are in the midst of a $14 million upgrade to increase capacity and eliminate combined sewer overflows at the Wastewater Pollution Control Center. The unfortunate problem was we ran into an issue with American Electric Power where they had to relocate some poles out on the site, and we need to grant them an easement so that they do not hold up our project. So if council would consider suspension of 2084 this evening, we would really appreciate it. It could lead to increased costs if we do not move forward with that as soon as possible. We are also requesting suspension of ordinance 2085. The reason for that is it was a grant of about $7,500 made to the Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department. We obviously do not like to sit on grant money or donations and allow the Parks Department to use that immediately instead of waiting sometimes 60 or 90 days. So if council would be willing to suspend that and pass this evening. And last but not least, requesting suspension of ordinance 2086. That is for an additional $46,000 for unemployment insurance on the police, sewer maintenance departments. Several reasons for it. One, we had the additional furloughs that you all know that we were granting this year. That saved the city significant dollars. The police department has saved the city more than $75,000 alone just with their furloughs. And then while we don't like to get into specifics, we had a couple of employees that resigned positions over the last few months. And for some reason, when they filed for unemployment, they were automatically given the additional money, and their unemployment was automatically granted. The Human Resources Director is in the process of appealing those claims. However, we are required to pay it out until we have either won or come to a resolution of those claims. So there's a lot of different things that go into this $46,000. But we have some bills that we have to pay. So if council would entertain suspension of 2086 this evening, it would help us because if we wait until this ordinance runs out, we actually run the risk of being fined by the state of Ohio for those unemployment claims that are outstanding. So we really need to get this passed this evening if possible. That is my list of suspensions, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody have any comment about any of that or questions? Congressman Jones?
I just have a comment. We here at the Committee of the Whole, I understand that, and the rest of us understand that. And I keep thinking in 2019, I was sitting in the stands there, and a lot of these things got suspended. And several of these, correct me if I'm wrong, are the first reading. And Mayor Monch did an excellent job of explaining why we're suspending them. And I would just hope that he or someone would do the same thing when we come to these because the first reading and emergency and passes seven to zero, I'm thinking people see the newspaper tomorrow and said, "Well, I didn't know they were talking about that." So I guess again, that's one of my hangups, and I just appreciate a thorough explanation when we...
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jones, for the suggestion. I guess that's really council's prerogative. In the past, I have always explained, or the law director or the finance director have always explained when we've asked for suspension of that. And then typically, I think Councilman Leopard would back me up on this. The council member, when they ask for suspension, give the reason or reiterate the reasons why they are requesting suspension. Now, if council would prefer me start doing that, I'm happy to have directed. But I know in the past, we've typically had the council member who is requesting suspension explain things. But if we'd like to change it, I'm entirely fine with that. I just need to know what council's prerogative is.
Congressman Jones?
And I keep saying, thank you, Mr. President. I keep saying I got on City Council to make a change, and this is one of the things I think would benefit the community. And I guess maybe I'm all wet here, but maybe no one in Tiffin views these council meetings or cares that we pass things seven to zero on the first reading. But just, and I've heard other council people explain it, but it just seems it's kind of an overview, and boom, in we go, and it gets past seven to zero. It's just thought we could do a little better job of communicating to the public. That's, I'll stand down.
Congressman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Jones, I'd be more than happy to kind of reiterate the mayor's rationale behind the request. I would say generally, almost always, is a finance department or a finance committee requests that usually require suspension due to it being a grant or due to a timeline being involved. So I would be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Congressman Gillig. Congressman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the council member that introduces legislation can handle that at the time.
Okay. I agree. You know, and if something happens, we need to fill in the blanks someplace. We can always come back and add, which we've done before. We've had the mayor or law director or the city administrator provide additional information, so... Mayor?
Yes, I am more than happy if there are any times that a council member feels that they're unable to explain or they misplaced their notes or anything. I'm more than happy if called upon during the meeting to give that explanation a second time. It's just, sometimes I feel like I talk enough during these meetings, and it's nice to let council have a little bit of feedback for the public so they're not just hearing the mayor constantly explaining these things. But if council just informs me in the future, or if there's a time you would rather me handle the explanation, Councilman Jones or anyone else, I'm more than happy to. Just give us direction, let me know, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Very good. Good discussion. Anything else? Law Director?
Yes, Resolution 20-28 is a one-reading item.
Okay.
So you do not need to suspend the three-reading rule, or you don't need to, there's no emergency. You just need to vote on that item.
Okay, yeah. So noted. If that... Congressman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor and City Administrator Thornton, it might be beneficial for 2083 if we just talk about some of the expenses that we are able to utilize the CARES funds for, once that time comes later in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And if I forget or Dale forgets, just remind us during the discussion point, Ben, when you ask for passage of it, I'd be happy to give some examples, and I'm sure Dale could as well.
Thank you.
Congressman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a short side note, I wanted to thank you for that email. I was reading that email, and I said, "Was President Coe talking about me?" And I went down a little checklist and train whistles and outside and ball cap on backwards and t-shirt. So yes, I appreciate you bringing that up. I went back and looked at 15 minutes of one of the things, and I see exactly what you're talking about. So thank you for bringing that up to my attention.
I was not singling anybody out. It was for all of us.
I'm aware of that. Okay, thank you.
Congressman Gillig?
I'm just thrilled, like I said many times. I haven't worn my school clothes since March, so I'm just delighted my collared shirt fit today.
Congressman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know time's getting short here. Mr. Mayor or City Administrator, can you give us an update on the rail crossings and how CSX is coming along with that?
Sure, what time? We've got a little bit. So CSX is working on the project. They're way behind schedule due to the coronavirus pandemic. If you recall, the Ohio Public Utilities Commission gave them the order of having the work completed by June 17th. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, the PUCO has allowed that deadline to pass and is not holding them to it. So the goal as of now is that CSX and the city all have the work wrapped up by late spring, early summer of next year, and then immediately make application. And then everything will be in the hands of the Federal Rail Authority, which is the entity to grant the quiet zone to the city. So we will do what we can to hound the Federal Rail Authority. I know I plan to try to use our congressmen and our senators to push that issue in Washington, DC, because I know it's very important to many of our citizens here in Tiffin.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for the Committee of the Whole? All right, declare the Committee of the Whole meeting closed. It is now 7 o'clock. I'd like to open the first meeting in August, August 3, 2020, Meeting of Tiffin City Council this evening. Councilwoman Boyle will lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Boyle?
If you would all just join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy income that will be done, unearthed, those who are in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, deliver us from evil. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite, and ever.
Thank you. And I'll ask Clerk Anne Forrest to call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman Leopard?
Here.
Councilman Perry?
Here.
Councilman Schuff?
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of Tiffin City Council are present. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for the purpose of considering ordinance 20-80, which is an ordinance responding to petition number 103 vacating an alley in the First Highland Edition running south from First Avenue in the Second Ward of the city of Tiffin. At this time, anyone wishing to address any council may raise their hand and be recognized by Kathy Moore and direct your comments to President City Council, please. Kathy, do we have anyone that...
Mr. President, no one has raised their hand to address the council.
Okay. All right. Congressman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really want to delay this hearing, but I did speak with, I think it's Dan and Donna Cook this afternoon about 2:30. And she and he assured me they were going to join us at 7:00 PM and say a few words about the alley on First Avenue. So take that for what it's worth. We, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, the Cooks have raised their hand now.
Okay. Then either one of you can please express your comments.
Okay, this is Donna Cook. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Donna.
Okay, I'm new to this program, so bear with me.
Okay.
Yeah, what we basically have done is we purchased the property at 125 First Avenue last November. It had a mobile home on it. We have removed that mobile home, and we are planning on constructing a garage or slash hole building to put vehicles in. That mobile home was removed last Monday. The sewer was capped, according to the engineer's office. And now it would just be moving forward in getting the building up. But our idea was that instead of having to have two separate gas line services, one for each side of the alleyway, Columbia Gas told us they could hook up to our current service, but they would not allow gas lines to be under the alleyway. So that is our reasoning behind trying to vacate the alley.
Okay. Any other comments? Donna?
No, we just know that if it does get vacated, that we have to put a barrier up so that there's no people trying to drive through and that, you know, we first met, we didn't have to worry about calling the police department if someone did drive through. We would be putting up some type of barrier, like a rail guard or something on one of the ends and marking it as private property at that point in time.
Okay. Do you have any comments, Doug? Is Doug there?
No.
All right. Councilman Leopard, do you have anything? You want to add?
No, I don't, Mr. President. That is exactly how Doug and Donna explained it to the committee when we...
Okay. Thank you. Congressman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, again, Doug and Donna Cook, their neighbor at 117 First Avenue, we have 117 Stephen Kramer. Four of us met, walked down the alleyway. He was concerned about the garage in the backside of his property. After the Cooks explained their vision, if you will, he was more than satisfied. He just wanted to make sure he could get in Reserve A to his garage, and he was totally satisfied with this. I... Thank you.
All right. Kathy, is there anybody else that has tuned in?
No one else has raised their hands.
Okay. Does anyone else have a comment? All right. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to declare the public hearing over. We'll now move on to minutes. Did everybody have an opportunity to read over the minutes from our last meetings? Are there any additions, corrections to be made? Okay, without objection, we will consider the minutes from July 2020 approved. Committee, we're now under committee reports. Councilman Gillig, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. No formal report at this time, but we did meet on Thursday, July 23 to discuss the possibility of a resolution to send to our governor and state representatives. And the result of that meeting, after some fantastic discussion, is Resolution 20-28, which will be read tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Congressman Gillig? Law Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones?
Sorry, no report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Schuff?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody see a need for a Committee of the Whole meeting? Okay. We'll move on to reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Aaron D. Monch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, we'll start off. I know that we made a very tough decision to postpone the fireworks that we had already postponed from July the 4th. They were originally scheduled for Friday, the 4th of September. Unfortunately, we've arrived at the decision after discussing matters with health officials and internally here within the administration, as well as the fireworks company. The decision was made to go ahead and cancel that show for this year. You know, a lot of this comes down to what we have discussed time and time again, and that is keeping the coronavirus-related numbers and especially hospitalizations in Tiffin and Seneca County as low as possible because of the new rating system that the state of Ohio has established. The concern is if we go to a level red or a level purple county, we could risk another shutdown here, which we all know that we cannot afford for a great many reasons. It's like I put out in the press release today that it is not simply about financial matters. We cannot afford to go through a shutdown because of mental health reasons, financial reasons, and just the overall well-being of our city and county right now. So with the cancellation of the fireworks, it avoids a large mass crowd. The governor just last Thursday reiterated that the order of 10 people or more in a gathering is still in effect. There is really no way to do this fireworks display and meet the state regulations that have been put in place. You know, we're looking out for our residents, trying to keep them healthy and safe, but we're also looking out for our businesses. I don't think any of us really found joy in canceling the fireworks. I know I didn't. We delayed the decision as long as we could to try to keep an eye on how numbers were doing. And at the end of the day, with our cases continuing to rise, hospitalizations continuing to rise, and active cases continuing to rise, the prudent and proper decision to make was to cancel the display this year. My hope, and as I discussed with Parks and Recreation Director Bryce Kuhn this morning, my hope is that we're able to come back in 2021 and have the biggest Fourth of July bash that we've ever had at Hedges Boyer Park, spend some extra on the fireworks, have bands out at the park most of the day. And by that time, hopefully, we have a vaccine in place, and most of us have been able to be vaccinated so that we are in a place that we can have a great Fourth of July celebration to celebrate our nation's birthday at Hedges Boyer Park next year. We went over all sorts of different scenarios. We looked at in-car fireworks. The problem was there is no good place in the community really to do that that is within the city limits. At Hedges Boyer Park, we know we love Hedges Boyer Park, but a lot of that is the greenery as well. The fact that there are so many trees, there are not areas within that park where we could have set off fireworks to where anywhere near the number of people that we bring in for the Fourth of July would have been able to enjoy those fireworks. We looked at some other areas within the community. We would have had just either traffic nightmares, not been able to bring in the amount of people. And then also the concern over the fact that we are still responsible if we were to hold the fireworks, and folks were getting out of their vehicles. Even if it was mandated, they had to remain in. How on earth do you police something like that and ensure that it's not going on? We just do not have the manpower for those sorts of things. So we hope that council supports the decision. We hope to have the biggest and best fireworks show that we've ever had next year, and that we can celebrate coming out of this and the community coming together once again in a time of health, and that we're able to remember the struggle that 2020 turned out to be and look to the future for bigger and better things. Going into the financial update, we finished the month of July up approximately $281,000 of revenue compared to July of 2019. Unfortunately, that's not nearly as much as we had hoped to have been up. If you recall, the state of Ohio changed the tax filing deadline for income taxes from April 15th to July the 15th. If you look back at April of 2019, we collected over $1.2 million of revenue. If you look at this month, we unfortunately had only just over $1 million. So we were down about $200,000 of revenue. Trying to compare as best you can those numbers, and we're just not in a place where we had hoped to have been as far as tax returns ticking up. You know, it was sad because we really started off 2020 in a record position. The first three months of the year, we saw near-record increases. We were up 11% in January, 20% in February, and then 11.3% in the month of March, and then the bottom absolutely fell out. We were down 30% of all of our revenue in the month of April. We were down 29% in the month of May, and then in the month of June, we were down 22%. So we started off this year with some of the lowest unemployment rates that we've experienced, some of the best income tax collections that we have ever collected, and then the bottom absolutely fell out due to the coronavirus pandemic. Just since April 1st, city revenue is down approximately 15%, which is a net total of about $575,000. And this, of course, is just on the income tax side. This does not take into account property taxes, sewer revenue funds, or any of our special funds that we have within the city. This is income tax numbers. And so we are doing what we can, as you all know, to make cuts here at the city. We've eliminated all sorts of nonessential travel, any kind of training seminars, et cetera. Anything that is not absolutely required has been eliminated. We have drastically cut back on any kind of approved overtime unless it is in an emergency-type of situation. And we're doing the best we can to manage things going forward so that we are not in a financial crisis. If you recall, back in 2008, '09, and '10, the city really did go through a financial crisis, as this entire country did during the Great Recession. So now we are doing what we can to be proactive so that we are not in that circumstance. I still shudder when I think back of January 1, 2012, when I took office as mayor, and the finance director at the time, Gwen Reinhardt, came to me and told me, "Well, just so you know, we have approximately $163,000 in our reserves, and that's all we have." well, just so you know, we have approximately $163,000 in our reserves, and that's all we have. I said, okay. You know, we were told back on council that we had just over $500,000. And it turned out that that last month of collections were nowhere near what we had hoped. And we had $163,000, which was about half of what we need to make a payroll here at the city. So we were literally watching income tax money coming in almost by the hour to ensure that we were able to issue paychecks to employees for that first month of January. Thank God we're not in that position. We have built our cash reserves up into a good position, and we're hoping that we can avoid that. So thank you to City Council for being so proactive in helping us with these decisions. But a huge thank you to the department heads here within the city because they've made a lot of very difficult sacrifices, have as our employees. It's been a very, very difficult four months. People are stressed. A lot of us are feeling overworked, but we know that we are doing it for the right reasons to avoid the bottom falling out here in the Tiffin community. So thank you to our department heads, our employees, and you all in City Council for your assistance with all of that. Okay, so enough bad news. Let's talk about good things that are happening here in the community. Probably have bred in the news that Amerwood, or excuse me, that Webster Industries announced a $3 million expansion project to their facility. It's just great. Webster continues to go gangbusters. This is, I believe, the third different expansion in about the last eight years that they have undergone at the facility. Just great things happening. You know, Andy Felder, the president there, does a fantastic job, the employees at Webster. You know, you go on tours to the facility, you can tell how happy the folks are there. Just a great company, and it's nice to see them continuing to make investments, even in the middle of this pandemic at a time when many of our manufacturers have laid employees off. They're running skeleton crews to see that Webster Industries really put their, you know, foot on the gas and said, we're going to invest in the community. We're happy here in Tiffin. We're going to invest another $3 million into our facility. So that was fantastic. Then another one, I know David Zach and his TSEP team are out there listening, but I can tell you right now, I cannot give enough kudos to the job that David Zach and our Economic Development Office did on the Amerwood project. I know David's going to talk about it more in depth here in the near future. But, you know, team, I'll tell you, they know what they're doing, and I am so impressed with the job that they did. So no one in the community, I don't think, realizes what that situation was like with the Amerwood, at the Amerwood expansion. We were a finalist for the expansion project, but the downside of that was if we did not get the expansion, the facility here was to close. So I can't reiterate enough, I mean, David Zach, Nick Dutrow, Audrey Flood, the administration in the trenches, literally fighting tooth and nail with a couple of these other facilities to ensure that those jobs, those 200 jobs that are out there stayed here in Tiffin. And now because of the work that the folks at TSEP, Economic Development Office, the administration did to push that project over the finish line, and I can't, I also have to give kudos to State of Ohio, Jobs Ohio, and the Regional Growth Partnership. Every single tiny, minute aspect that we put into that deal is what got, kept 200 jobs in our community and also added another 90-plus that will be moving here into this facility. They are closing down their plant in Michigan and moving all of that work down here to Tiffin, Ohio. So, you know, Bravo, David, TSEP team, Jobs Ohio, the administration, that was probably one of the most stressful projects that we've worked on in the last few years because we knew the high stakes. TSEP, the administration, has worked at this for, gosh, David or Nick can correct me when they hop on here for comp plan, but better part of a year with these discussions. And just huge kudos, a big, big positive outcome for the Tiffin community when it could have been a very negative one. But we know here in Tiffin, we like to win and we do things the right way. So thank you to all of those in that teamwork. Things are still quite busy here in the community. City Engineer Matt Watson let me know that zoning permits are up 21% right now. A lot of that we attribute to the fact that during the time that people were off work and received their stimulus checks. It's a good sign that people were making improvements to their properties and their businesses. So a 21% increase in permits in a single year is a pretty substantial increase. So it looks like a lot of folks put stimulus money or additional money that they received from the grant program that was put out through the CARES Act and other items, but just nice to see that people are investing in their properties, their businesses, as our zoning permits are up 21% right now here in the Tiffin community. I'm just going to touch on one thing because you're going to hear a lot more about it most likely at our next council meeting. But myself and the Economic Development Office with David Zach, Dale Thornton, and Brett Howard have been working on a new zoning classification that we are proposing to City Council. As Tiffin continues to grow and we expand our boundaries, we have a lot of new things to kind of take into account. Some of that is agriculture and animal husbandry, things like that. So we are tackling this right now internally. We'll have an official proposal to you most likely at the next council meeting in August. But just to give you a heads up that we're getting a little creative as we continue to grow here in Tiffin to encourage additional areas to be willing to annex into the city. This kind of new classification of zoning will be proposed to City Council. Most likely your next meeting, we think, we'll have things ready to go and then get it referred to committee so that we can start that ball rolling on those things. It's been a very busy, busy summer with construction projects. The Ella Street Bridge is nearly completed. They were pouring sidewalks this morning, and by the end of this week, they should be pouring the decorative railings that are on the side of the bridge. The lamp posts that go on the side will be delayed a couple of months due to the lead time of receiving that product separately. We still hope to have them installed by the end of this year. But that street will be open on or before August the 14th. So great job, Matt Watson and the engineer's office, our construction firm and our project management team, because, you know, it's yet another example of the city thinking outside the box and thinking of the big picture as far as school time opening, having this project wrapped up and completed to have the least amount of disruptions as possible. But, you know, it's just, it's great because this is the third major bridge project that we have been able to do during my administration where we have not had to borrow money to get this done. It's really tremendous when you think about the cost of a lot of these bridge projects and the fact that we have not had to go into any kind of debt to be able to fund them really says a lot about the state of the city and the fact the voters approved the road and bridge levy. It's great because that bridge, in theory, should last for the next 100 years. And we really do not want the next several generations paying that bill back on future taxes for that bill. So we've been able to get that bridge, the Bernard Holman Memorial Bridge, and also the remake of the Kennedy Bridge on the north side of town. All those projects have been able to be completed using local funds, grants, road and bridge levy dollars, and not borrowing money so the future generations are tied down. Street paving is going hot and heavy here in the community. We plan to have it wrapped up most likely by the end of August. They've done now over 250 curb ramps just this year in preparation for street paving. So it's been a very active summer with these projects. The Jefferson Street, Jefferson Street, Streetscape is planning to begin on August 24th. That will be a street closure as that Streetscape project gets underway and is constructed. There will be limited access for the judicial parking lot and a few of the businesses. But other than that, Jefferson Street will be closed as that project goes on. Farmers markets will be moved. The committee's already aware of that. They're making arrangements to do things on Court Street and possibly Washington Street again as they used to do if it's needed. So just something to everyone to have as a heads up. And then also, just to give council another piece of information, the police department's new vehicles this year. As you all know, every year we cycle out some old police vehicles that are past their useful life, and we purchase new ones. This year's vehicles, they're doing something a little different, and they're actually going to, they're having board F-150 pickup trucks. We found that they are no additional cost. They get the same approximate gas mileage as the current vehicles. And the department's going to try that out, will most likely just have two of them. But we think that there is definite some need with that, with the fact of a lot of the equipment that we have to haul around. And there are also times that, of course, the police need to tow vehicles and other things. They'll actually be able to do that with these vehicles. They've not been able to do that with the cars or the explorers that they have. So no additional cost whatsoever for these vehicles, same gas mileage. So I think it's just, you know, kudos to Chief Stevens and his department for thinking a little outside the box and giving this a try. So you'll probably see those new police trucks cruising around late this week or this weekend, at least is the goal. They nearly have them fitted and ready to go. So with that, if there are any questions, I would answer them, and then I will turn, I'll go into the comprehensive plan. So if there are questions about anything I just covered, that'd be great before we start comprehensive plan talks.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno.
I have a curiosity question. Does the pickup trucks have crew cabs in case they have to haul people?
I believe that Chief said they did this morning. I did not jot that down in my notes when he and I had our meeting, but I believe he did say that they were the extended cabs so that they have room for all of that. Potentially, if we're able to bring back the police dog program, that also may be a good, a good vehicle for that as well.
Are those trucks four-wheel drive, Mayor?
Yes, that was also another reason for it. We have struggled in the past. We all know this area. Some years you go with no snow, other years you'll have what seems to be, you know, feet upon feet of snow. This gives us another four-wheel drive option outside of the explorer fleet that we have.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to commend you for making the tough decision on fireworks. I know it may not be overly popular, but it's probably the right way to go. And with that in mind, I'm wondering if we should maybe form some sort of committee where we could do some brainstorming with regards to trick-or-treating in the city? If we can maybe ensure some best practices for that, issue some recommendations or anything to that effect? I'm sure it's something that's already crossed your mind, but it might be a good idea just to start thinking of things since peers were in this situation for the long haul.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea. We are, of course, here, the administration, open to any kind of ideas. Trick-or-treat is a little different in the fact that a date is just selected. There's no official, you know, the city's not purchasing fireworks and encouraging people to show up and party all day like they do with the 4th of July celebration. But yeah, at the same time, we do need to start thinking about that. I know the Tiffin Developmental Center has already canceled the annual Halloween parade. It's the first time I can remember in my lifetime having the Halloween parade canceled. But this is also the first time I can ever recall the Heritage Festival being canceled as well as the Cross Country Carnival. I cannot recall a single period of time in my life that I can, that any of those items have been canceled. It's just been a very different year, but we're certainly open to that. I don't know, is that a voluntary effort on your part, Councilman Gillig, that you're saying you're willing to serve on the Trick-or-Treat Committee if we create one?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
We would love that. Anyone that is willing to volunteer, council members or not, I think that's something we're going to have to discuss. It's a great day for kids. We have to find ways to also do it safely if it is going to occur.
I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Boyle and the Law and Community Planning Committee, if that's okay with you.
Perfect.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to ask the mayor if he could just take a minute. I know he did it at the committee of the whole meeting at 6:45. But for the people who zoomed in at 7:00 PM, could you give an update on the railroad project that we spoke about earlier?
Sure. Thanks, Councilman. Yes, so all of council obviously is aware, but for the public, there's been a lot of work going on at all the railroad crossings here in the city of Tiffin. That is a corridor safety improvement project. The goal is to improve the safety of all of our railroad crossings within the community. So we had some crossings here in Tiffin that ranked extremely high on the threat, the threat assessment that was done by the Ohio Rail Commission. Because of that, the Rail Commission worked with CSX, the Federal Rail Authority, and the city of Tiffin to make these improvements. The nice part is we're getting somewhere around $3.4 or $3.5 million of safety improvements done here in the Tiffin community. And at the end of the day, it's probably going to cost the city of Tiffin only about $200,000 total in that entire project. We went to Heidelberg University and Tiffin University, and both institutions have kicked in over $300,000 each to make the project happen because of their close proximity to the railroad tracks. So talk about great partners. They did not have to put any money into this project, and both university presidents and their boards voluntarily put up some big cash, much more than what the city of Tiffin is putting into this project to ensure that those railroad corridors were safe. Because we all know that we have two universities here in this town. They're right along the railroad tracks. And, you know, I think one of the items that myself and our police and fire chiefs and probably Dale Thornton are kept up at night about is if you have one of them hauling hazardous materials coming through town and a semi truck or something else runs one of those crossings and you have a major derailment here in the community. So this project, once completed, I don't want to say is going to make it impossible to get around the railroad crossings, but it will make it impossible to get around the railroad crossings without taking them out. So we'll have quad gates come down, completely covering the crossing. Also, as part of it, loops are put in place so that if a vehicle gets stuck, for example, if they're held up by a stop sign or a traffic signal and heaven forbid that vehicle doesn't realize the cars ahead of them are stopping and they stop in the middle of the tracks, it has a loop in there that will keep those gates from coming down so that vehicle can escape out of the opposite lane. Another item that we'll see potentially, some of the crossings are a middle divider so that you can't drive around to get around things and try to beat the trains, so to speak. So these improvements will drastically improve the safety of that entire railroad corridor through the entire city of Tiffin. And like we said, it's amazing the fact that it's about a $3.4, $3.5 million project. The city's going to be on the hook for somewhere around $200,000, the rest being paid for by CSX, Ohio Rail Development Commission, Federal Rail Authority, and the two universities here in the community. The nice part that happens after all of this is then we will institute a quiet zone in the city. Because of the fact that it is no longer possible to drive around or try to beat the train on the tracks, we will be able to institute the quiet zone, which means there will no longer be train whistles blowing here in the Tiffin community. The only way you'll hear a train whistle is if the engineer on that train sees the need to blow the whistle. So if he sees someone playing on the tracks or someone walking along the tracks or something of that nature, they still reserve the right in an emergency situation to sound their horn. However, this should cut back drastically on the amount of train whistles that we have. It's been wanted for years by a number of our residents who live along the railroad tracks, the universities, the businesses in those areas. It should help increase property values and really help the community as a whole become a better place to live. I know I don't live anywhere near the railroad tracks, and when you've got the windows open in the summer, you still hear the train whistles pretty loud. So this will really help with that. And one of the things, too, to keep in mind, I know it came up, well, what about people crossing the railroad tracks in other areas? We need to remember, it's actually against the law and considered trespassing for folks to use the railroad tracks and cross at any place other than the street designated crossing. So folks need to remember to, that, you know, railroad tracks are not safe, they're dangerous. You should not be crossing them or playing on railroad tracks or anywhere near them. And it's actually against the law in the first place. So I think that, good enough update, Councilman?
Councilman Jones.
Yeah, very thorough, but how about an estimated completion time, please?
Yes, all that talking, I forgot to mention probably what most people care the most about. Yes, so the, it was originally set to be completed by June 17th of this year. That was by order of the Ohio Public Utilities Commission. Unfortunately, when the coronavirus pandemic struck, the Public Utilities Commission has extended the deadline. They've not set a firm, hard deadline. They've just asked CSX to please hurry the project along, get it done when you can. Every indication that we have from CSX and the Ohio Rail Development Commission indicates that this should be done late spring, early summer of next year. And I can tell you literally the day it's done, we will, we will get the paperwork into the Federal Rail Authority, which is the DC office, which is the only entity that has the power to grant the quiet zone. So middle of summer to the end of next year, just it depends on how quick we can get Washington DC to act on the paperwork. But I know myself, I know many residents in the universities that have already committed to hounding Congressman Jordan and Senator Portman and Senator Brown to try to get them to do what they can to expedite the process. So it's not something that is sat on in Washington DC for months on end.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Schuff.
Yeah, just a question for the mayor, wasn't sure if he had an update on this or not. But where were we at as far as the potential bus route goes or the, I know they've talked about like a potential trolley system or having pickup and drop off points around the city?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. So the, the transit study has been completed. We are hoping to present that to all of you at City Council and then get it ratified. I'm looking at most likely the 21st of September. So if you could mark your calendars, that is when we plan to go over the transit study and the recommendations for how this loop can work around the community so that we have a transit system so that folks are able to get to and from work, to and from job and family services. And also I think it would be a really big hit with the two universities that we have. Talking to a lot of their students, especially some of the first and second year students, they don't have vehicles. And also the international students, most of them do not. Having this system through Tiffin should only increase the amount of commerce that they're able to do and also get a lot of our residents to and from work. Not everyone has access to a vehicle. So I think the goal is we're going to try to get that in front of you all just due to the heavy schedule that we have the next couple of meetings. Most likely September 21st to go through the plan. And then whatever council president prefers, whether you all just introduce legislation after that to approve it or whether he would like to send it to a committee. But we'll at least do the presentation there on September 21st unless something changes between now and then.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Councilwoman Yana Toono.
It's not really a question for the mayor, but we've been discussing all of these cancellations. And I was going to save this for the end of the meeting, but I thought it might be appropriate to mention now that we've had discussions and we're going to have to cancel Safety Week also this year, which usually takes place the week after Labor Day. And since school is starting up that week, that already caused a problem, which got us talking about it even more. And then when I checked in with Tiffin City Schools, they are not allowing any field trips, which we use their buses. They're not allowing visitors into the buildings. We hear visitors in their buildings. I actually have a classroom of probably about 30 kids every, you know, eight times in a day. They're too close on a rug. The firemen have two classes on rugs in a classroom. It's just too close, we wipe down the trikes, but it's just not going to get it done. So we will be also canceling Safety Week unfortunately.
Yeah, you know, Don, I kind of expected that we were going to hear that in the near future and that just further confirms things. It's, it's unfortunate the situations that we're in right now and a lot of these cancellations of so many things that so many of us look forward to. You know, and, and to kind of, you know, put it out there. I think one of the things that the public is just growing very frustrated about and is the fact that there are so many different political entities involved with all of this making decisions. You know, you have city government, municipal government here with all of us. But then you also have Tiffin City Schools, which is complete and separate from us. And then you have the Seneca County Fair Board, which is complete and separate of us and the Seneca County Commissioners. And everyone is making their own decision with the best information that they have available. And, and I do understand at least why the public grows a little confused or frustrated when they see, well, one week there's a fair going on. The next week the city is announcing that there's no fireworks and, you know, no Heritage Festival. But we have to keep in mind is the city cannot make the Seneca County Fair Board do anything that the Seneca County Fair Board does not want to and vice versa. And the same goes with Tiffin City Schools. Just because they are Tiffin City Schools, they are, you know, school boards is a quasi-form of state government. They in no way fall under our jurisdiction here at the city. Me being the mayor or you all with City Council, as you all know, could tell the school board to do anything you want as far as school opening goes and they have the right to make their own decisions at the local school board. So I know people are wondering why students are able to go back to school, but yet we're canceling festivals and cross-country meets and whatnot. And a lot of that is because we have two totally separate political entities that have to follow different guidelines. And unfortunately, I know everyone is doing the best they can to try to make the best decisions that they can. And at the end of the day, the only things that myself and City Council can give directive to or cancellation to are items that directly fall under our jurisdiction. So that's not really for any of you, you all know that, but that's just to kind of explain to the public why they're seeing so many different events either being canceled or going forward or being altered. It's because there is no one political entity in Seneca County that runs everything. We're not like Puyahoga County or Summit County where they have a county executive that has that authority over almost the entire county. Our form of government is very much different than that. And the only things that we can control is what falls under the Tiffin codified ordinances, our city charter and within our municipal boundaries. So just another explanation for all of that.
With our Safety Week, we don't, we're not affiliated with anybody. It's a separate entity, but it's a great partnership with Calvert Catholic, Tiffin City Schools, the firemen, the police. We all just work great together. And so that's why we started outreach to see, you know, what their thoughts were. And the decision came down that way because we will do what's best for kids like we do that whole week. And so just in the spirit of keeping kids safe, that's why we'll wait till next year, we'll be back. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Anything else for the mayor? I just said, I want to make a comment on behalf of all the members of the council. I want to congratulate Webster and Amerwood for their continued success. And also want to thank the mayor and the city administrator as well as TSEP, David Zach, Nick Detrow. It takes all, all of you working together to make these things happen. And that's a wonderful, that's especially with the bad news that we're seemingly bothered with every day to have these businesses expanding in our community. That's a true blessing and want to thank all of you for your hard work. Okay, moving on. Clerk of Council, Anne Forrest.
Rich, Council President.
Yes.
We still have the comprehensive plan.
Well, you want to do that now?
I think that's preferred, that way we can, that way we can let David and Charlene leave unless they're wanting to stick.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, I told you it's going to be a lengthy meeting this evening.
Yeah, you did. I, I was, I was going to do it under oral communication, we can do it now, it'd be fine.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get that done so we don't confuse the public with their, with their period of time. So anyway, since I've talked so much. As you all know, as City Council, we have been working diligently for about the last 18 months on the joint city of Tiffin, Seneca County, city of Fostoria and County Parks District Comprehensive Plan. To our knowledge and research, there has really been no one else in the state of Ohio that has done this broad reaching of a plan that covers all of these political entities to try to bring everyone on the same page. This is very forward-thinking and outside of the box really. You know, very seldom can you get cities and county government or townships, et cetera, to agree on things. And the fact that the city of Tiffin, the city of Fostoria, all of our county commissioners, many of the township trustees, the Parks District, all came together along with the regional planning offices, economic development offices to come up with one major comprehensive plan to essentially be our planning document for the next 15 to 20 years is really extra special. No one has done it quite like this in the state of Ohio because no one gets along as well as we do and rows in the same direction like we all do here in Seneca County. And that's just one of the special elements that really is on our secret sauce here locally for why Tiffin and Seneca County are so successful with so many things. And that's our ability to work together and put aside past differences or issues that we have to do what's best for local government, whether it be the county, the city, et cetera. So we have David Zach and Charlene Watkins here this evening. I don't know Kathy or, yep, we got them on already. So I think Charlene is going to go first. She's going to give a very high-level overview of things. And then David Zach is going to jump into some more of the weeds a little bit on the city side of items. And what's great with this plan is it's one big plan for everyone, yet all of the portions in the plan are also able to be extracted, if you will, so that it is its own separate document. So the city has its own specific piece of that pie with our ownership of that. So really unique document, tons of work, lots and lots of hours and lengthy meetings went into making this happen over about the last 18 months. Kudos to Charlene and David, everyone on that committee. It's been a lot of fun, been a lot of, I don't want to say arguing, but going back and forth in the room over items that until we got into an agreement about it, but really goes back to our roots here in Tiffin and Seneca County of cooperation, getting along. And at the end of the day, everybody just doing the right thing. So Charlene, with that, I'm going to turn things over to you.
Well, good evening, council members, council president and mayor. Thank you for that wonderful introduction and synopsis of what we went through for the last 18 months. As the mayor has stated, we've had some happy times, some blood, some sweat and some tears that went into this, but it was totally worth it. I am so proud of the team that we put together to create this plan. And I am thankful for our community members and leaders who took time out of their busy and hectic schedules to provide qualified and quantifiable input. We held multiple community input sessions. We met individually with community leaders and citizens. We did extensive research. And we feel that by this point in time, we've come up with a wonderful multi-jurisdictional county plan that includes both cities and the County Park District. I'm going to do a little screen sharing with you. I'm going to go through a little bit of things, I'm not going to read the plan to you because it was provided to you months ago, so you could read it. And I just want to share some highlights. And I'm going to try my best to do this, so please bear with me. I think you should have it. So our plan was finalized June 2020. And we are now reaching out to all of our partners. Our partners include Seneca Regional Planning Commission, the Seneca County Commissioners, the city of Tiffin, the city of Fostoria and the Seneca County Park District. The city of Fostoria is being handled by the Fostoria Economic Development Corp. We are reaching out to each of those partners to approve the plan as to form and to adopt the plan. The Seneca County Park District has already approved and adopted. I will be presenting to my board on Wednesday requesting their approval and adoption. And tonight I am presenting to you requesting such, and then I will meet with the Fostoria Economic Development Corp to do the same. What I like about our plan is it's extremely personalized. You'll see that as you go through it, and I'm sure it really did touch the, touch some heartstrings on some of the photos that we got that were personal photos as well as some photos that were done during contests and that were professionally done. So when we talk about this, we talk about who are our core people that brought this plan to fruition. And I have to say, our core people are going to be our committee members. And our committee members were a large group that included not only myself and the mayor and David Zach, but also Councilwoman Yana Toono, all the commissioners, Fostoria Economic Development Corp, the TSEP, the Park District, FEDC and others. And I'm not trying to leave anybody out on purpose, it was just a very large and very informative group. That group had the control of basically saying, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to build. And it took us a while to get to that understanding of what we really wanted to build because none of us had the crystal ball that we could see what was going to happen in the next 15 to 20 years. But what we could do is look at what we have done and say, this is how we want to grow. So we actually came up with vision statements for every one of our partners in the project. And those vision statements are very personalized to each entity. So I'm just going to go for the city of Tiffin's. These plans, once they are approved and adopted by all partners, will be available on regional planning's website. So you'll be able to see everything. But the city of Tiffin's vision was to be a regional hub for businesses and industry as well as a vibrant and attractive place for residents, employees and visitors. Providing a range of housing to meet the needs of all households. Continuing to celebrate and preserve our historical cultural resources and recognize them as economic development drivers. Working cooperatively with local institutions to foster learning and advancement and supporting the active lifestyles of residents. I don't know how you can say it any better than the city of Tiffin wants to make everybody feel comfortable and wants to prosper. And we want to honor our heritage. That vision statement really speaks to us. But I think that was a great way to look at it. Once we had vision statements, we started building integrated goals. And then we had to think about, well, we all have these goals, but who do they apply to? Because we are doing something that's not been done. We were creating this unified plan. So we had to tailor those goals for each entity. So what the city of Tiffin feels are important goals may not be necessarily exactly what the Park District needs, right? Because does the Park District really need economic development in their goals? And they're focusing on fostering the nature and preserving those things. I don't think so. So we had to look at those items. We continued forward thinking about why this unified plan was so important. It was because everything we would have done for the county is like 75% of the work that we would have done for each of these other entities. Why do we want them to pay for it? We did not want them to have to pay for work that was already done, where we could work together. So we worked together, we created a five-chapter multi-jurisdictional comprehensive plan. Chapters one through four are basically your introductions, overview, statistics, mapping and land use. You then move into chapters five. Chapter five has subchapters, which point to each be identified by the partner. So you'll have a chapter 5.1 that might be for the Seneca County, 5.2 could be for another, 5.3, 5.4 and so on. So the city of Tiffin's subchapter is 5.3, and that can be pulled out separately and you'll see that shortly. As we move through, you can see that we had wonderful people attending our meetings in these photos. People who had strong interest in our community and helped us plan and get through those community input sessions. I cannot say enough how proud I am of the citizens of Seneca County for really embracing this project and joining in and having their voice heard. Because in the end, it's their voice that helps us build this plan. It wasn't me and the mayor of the Tiffin, the mayor of Fostoria, the commissioner and David Zach and Renee Smith sitting down with Sarah and all of us saying, this is what we want and this is how it's going to be. That wasn't it. It was the community and we really respected that. We moved through all of these wonderful meetings, we've had them at multiple places. And we came up with some great strategies and great thought processes that we went through. You can, we then lead to a little bit of our history when you're looking through what took place and how it took place. Basically, Seneca County had a very limited update to their comprehensive plan in 2001. David knows the exact date for the city's most recent comprehensive plan. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I believe it's even older than the county's. And at this point, we just needed to really get together and bring together a good plan. Well, planning for the comprehensive plan wasn't even the beginning. It started with new economic development strategies in 2011. And then we just started moving forward. In 2016, we had a park district, the strategic plan that was created. 2016, there was the impediment to fair housing that was updated. And that was for all, for the county and both municipalities. We actually are, started working on the transportation improvement plan in 2017 and we continue to work on that plan. We actually are started working on the transportation improvement plan in 2017, and we continue to work on that plan. It's an ever-moving plan. 2017, again, we had the Senate coordinated public and human services transportation plan. 2018, we had a community branding plan that TSEP worked through with multiple partners. And we have the active transportation plan in 2018. The city of Tiffin had a strategic downtown plan in 2010. A downtown strategic plan in 2016. Parking study in 18. The housing opportunity in 19, and the Tiffin Farmers Market in 19. So you can see that since 2016, Seneca County and the city of Tiffin have decided that planning is important. And I agree, that's why we have regional planning, because planning is important. Without the plan, we don't know where we're going to move forward to, and we can't work towards that common goal. So that is what we are going to continue today. Seneca County has a little over 55,000 residents, which the city of Tiffin makes up 17,546 of those residents, give or take. Because you know, that number fluctuates a little every day. We have a great location in Seneca County. And we have some great population information for you. I'm just going to scroll through very nicely and quickly through this to get to the land use maps. This is 84 pages of information in chapters one through four. Don't think you want me to read them all to you. Let me get down. So if you look at this, this is what's important to our office as well as many others is the land use for Seneca County. As you can see, the light green is agricultural, and that is what Seneca County is about. But when you come down and start looking at Tiffin, we have quite a bit of orange here, and that is residential. We then can zoom down on the city of Tiffin and see that we have multiple other things going on. We have commercial, we have parks and recreation, we have industrial areas. Fostoria does the same. We talk about zoning and tax basis. So as you can see in the introduction, there's quite a bit. So I'm going to flip over to chapter 5.3, which is the city of Tiffens. And they're looking for achieving tomorrow for the city of Tiffens. At some point, I'm going to scroll real fast, so I'll warn you ahead of time so you don't get motion sickness, okay? We've already talked about the vision. We have some wonderful photos again. And then we want to talk about the goals for the city of Tiffens. I'm not going to go deep. I'm just going to tell you what they are. We want a prosperous and resilient economy. Attractive, desirable and livable places built in environments. Quality community facilities and services. Environmental stewardship and valued natural resources. Enhanced mobility, accessibility and public utilities. Strong community character and image. When you start looking at those things, you have to talk about what does it take to make those things happen? When you get down into the goals, we start talking about objectives. How do we make this happen? How do we make a prosperous and resilient economy come into play? Well, there's quite a bit that goes into it, and you can see that from the objectives. And I'm just going to kind of go slowly through this section. So you can kind of see all these different objectives that go into play. And then we start talking about improvement areas. And we like to show you this map because these are potential areas of improvement in Seneca County and in the city of Tiffens. The city of Tiffens has great opportunities available, and I'm sure the mayor and TSEP are going to be looking at those even more in depth. Even while they're talking about rezoning and new zoning. And I'm hoping some of that new zoning language is coming from the fact there's some things they learned during our comprehensive planning process. And it really opens our eyes. So we just keep moving forward. And again, I'm going to start scrolling a little bit faster here because I want to get to a different section. You can see we even talk about downtown Tiffens. We show some great updated photos of what's going on. Then we talk about desire on neighborhoods. And you can see that all of these are very in-depth, right? They have a great description about what we want to try to achieve, what we want to do in those areas, what those objectives mean. And I'm going to warn you now, I'm going to start scrolling really fast because I want to get to a certain section, so please avert your eyes. You don't get motion sickness. We're almost there. I'm trying to get down to our listing. Okay, I will stop scrolling. So we have an implementation timeframe. One of the key things I heard when we started talking about doing this multi-jurisdictional plan. And putting something together and recreating a plan and putting it into words. Can't tell you how many times I heard it. Charlene, plans just sit on the shelf. My response is, our plans don't sit on a shelf. We need to make these usable and workable. So to do that, we put together implementation timeframes. And as you can see here, each goal and objective is listed out for the city. So they can actually go in and pull this table right out of their own chapter and have it on their desk as a working document. We can look at things that are important to them that are ongoing. And I'm just going to kind of highlight a little bit of that, but if you look at strategic planning. TSEP is to continue to engage in annual strategic planning for downtown and citywide economic community development. That's something that's supposed to be ongoing. They're going to do that continuously. Some immediate needs that are zero to two years, such as 1.13, which are organizations identifying developer strengthened committees. And organizations to oversee implementation of those plans. There are some things that are short-term. That would be what we call an item C. And that can be things like economic development strategy, updating that comprehensive economic development strategy. And economic is obviously my tough word today. Sorry about that. And then as you move down through the plan, you can see there are long-term goals that can take five plus years. There could be interstate access that you see down here. Improving truck roadway connections between Tiffens, Seneca County and I-75, I-80, I-90. That's very important, but it's going to take more than five years. We were realistic. And I have to give credit to our team. They were so realistic about this. When they looked at things, they were like, yeah, we want to do it tomorrow, but it can't happen tomorrow. They understood the reality of that. So we want you as a council to be able to say, hey, we want to pull that plan out. We're going to hold our community members and our community leaders accountable because you have this plan. How are these things working? You can see those. You can reference it and you can use it. Our goal at regional planning will be, once the plan is finalized by everybody and approved and adopted. We will then institute key personnel that we're going to meet with once a year is basically a status check. How are things going? Does anything need change? Does something need updating? Our goal in our office is so that we don't have to encounter a situation like we did in 2016 when I took over regional planning. Where the plans were so outdated that none of us really had a plan. We were just working from the cuff, right? We were doing what we knew needed to be done. We want to make sure that this continuously gets updated, continuously is able to be used. And we can modify as needed, as well as we can keep status checks on what's taking place. If there's some ongoing or immediate needs, those are things that myself, the mayors, the commissioners, economic development corps. We can all work together to try to achieve. So you can see there's quite a bit for the city of Tiffens. And we're real excited to get working on this. What I would like to say is that everybody who has already received final copies of the plans. Kind of had a little chuckle, I think, from the team because they're like, hey, we kind of started working on some of these things already. But we already knew they ran the plan and we wanted to get rolling on them. At this time, I will open it up to any questions you might have for me and turn it over to David. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Charlene? Right. Thank you, Charlene. Very interesting. David, you're next.
Thank you, council president. First, let me say that I really appreciate the mayor's comments. About Webster and Amerwood and about our own Nick Dutro. They are really great companies. And we are working hard to support their activities. Webster, of course, has made an official announcement. And Amerwood was approved for a state tax credit. The negotiations with Amerwood are still ongoing, but looks really promising, and we're just excited about everything going on in the community. Now to the multi-jurisdictional comprehensive plan. So from our perspective at the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership, as the city's economic, community and downtown development agency. I want you to know that we believe, and I personally believe this document is important, it's unique. And it's even a source of really strong pride. I wholeheartedly support and recommend you accept and adopt the plan that's been submitted to you. First, let me say that the comprehensive plan is important because I, like Charlene, believes that it gives Tiffens. As well as the other jurisdictions, a plan to move the community forward for the next 10 to 20 years. It lays out the roadmap for Tiffens to realize its overarching vision to be a hub for business. To be a vibrant, active city for the people living, working and visiting here. To be a community that celebrates, protects and invests in its history, arts and culture. And to be a place of learning and advancement. The shared and Tiffin-specific portions of this plan totals 128 pages. Has six major goals, 32 objectives and 164 specific strategies. That we can work on even within the next five years. I can tell you, and this is answer Charlene's question, the softball she was throwing at me. That for the first time since 1994, Tiffens has a new valid current comprehensive plan. As you know, we at TSEP, as at the Regional Planning Commission, as at the Fostoria Economic Development Corporation. Don't let plans gather dust on a shelf. Instead, we use them as a foundation for an annual planning process and scopes of work where we can roll up our sleeves and get things done. These plans provide the guiding document for making strategic decisions about what we are going to focus on. And about what we act on, and it provides the structure for measuring progress and success. It is indeed foundational to what we do. Second, in addition to being important, I think it's incredibly noteworthy, and I completely echo what the mayor said. That although Springfield and Clark County were the first to do a joint city-county plan in Ohio that we know of. We are the first that I'm aware of to have four jurisdictions. The city of Tiffens, Seneca County, city of Fostoria and Seneca Parks. Working collaboratively to create a multi-jurisdictional plan that develop both a common vision that Charlene shared with you. And also four strategic action plans, plans customized and tailored to each of our jurisdictions. We save money, we save time, and we have a much, much higher quality product. And we continue to build dialogue, relationships, collaboration and partnership along the way. Like the Seneca County Justice Center, it is one more example of what makes us unique and exceptional here. Our ability to work together to stay connected and to move forward. Third, I am proud of this document and the process that created it. I am grateful for the immense, and I do mean immense, amount of work that Charlene. And the Regional Planning Commission did in shepherding this project for the last three years. Nine months to get to a contract, 19 months to write the first draft. And another nine months to get to this finished product. It takes dedication, diligence and leadership to bring this to a successful close. And Charlene and her team have done just that. And so thank you so much, Charlene. I'm also proud of the more than 400 Tiffanites and more than 600 additional Seneca County residents. That let their voice be heard in the community survey. And the more than 100 that participate in the various community forums, attended meetings and interviews. And provided direct feedback. I'm proud of the work and commitment of the mayor, councilwoman Iyaatuno and the entire 18-member steering committee. And I'm proud of the process that Chris Hopkins, even though she got severely injured falling down a manhole. And Danielle Steinhouser from CT Consultants did in facilitating the process and the plans that that process produced. I'm also proud of the work that we did, you know, using taxpayer money. And you invest in us as your organization to partner with the Regional Planning Commission to provide support. Not only did we participate in the various meetings and forums, we did the initial research on multi-jurisdictional plans. And shared with council. I was looking back in the history of this project and I had discussion with Mark Hayes. Mayor, rest in peace about this, and he was as passionate about this as anyone. And Jim Roberts was on the initial emails as well, so this goes back that far. And I think it's a great testimony and legacy to them. We helped put together with Charlene, the RFP together. We developed Tiffin-specific survey questions and priorities with the mayor and councilwoman Iyaatuno. We promoted the process via press releases, website and social media. We in our organization submitted more than, and Charlene will tell you, she got a little irritated with me at times. More than 600 suggestions, recommended changes and edits to the various drafts because we consider it that important. And she was a good sport about it. So Charlene, more gratitude from me for that. And in the end, I think we have a really, really good document. Again, six goals, 32 objectives, 164 strategies. About a third of those fall under the first goal of economic development. About a third fall under the second and third goal of placemaking and community facilities, and the rest fall under environmental, environment, environment, transportation and community image. Each strategy, and I love this, I love this as well, is prioritized as Charlene was guiding you through that. About 20% of them are the top priority, so not every single one. I think that's good. Another 40% are kind of second priority or B priority. Each strategy is also categorized, as Charlene showed you, on when it can be accomplished. With about half of them ongoing already and half of them not having yet been started. Of those that we have started, or of the ones that have not yet been started, about 80% of them can be taken on within the next five years. So even though this is a 10 to 20-year plan, we don't have to wait that long to make significant impact, even with some new initiatives. There's lots, lots new, lots of interesting new things to work on. Strategies in suitable locations, entrepreneurship, downtown property maintenance. Active living, green space, roadways, alternative transportation, tourism and other areas that are new. One specific example of a strategy we are launching just now. That was, you know, came out of this plan is the creation of an entrepreneurship strategic plan, which the city has never had. And we're working with the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership. And at our next meeting within the next month, we're looking forward to approving the process. The Great Lakes Community Action Partnership has put together and beginning our SWOT analysis. So Audrey Flood with our team is kind of the team lead for that. Tyler Schuff is helping lead our entrepreneurship development committee. We appreciate what he's doing there. And I look forward to that. It's just one of the 164 things that we get the privilege to work on. For us, the most important thing about a plan is how we and others are going to use it. From our perspective, as your lead community development agent for the city of Tiffens. We're going to have oversight of this from what we do, fall to our new Tiffens Community Development Committee. And this is going to be similar to how our downtown development committee oversees our downtown strategic plan. Both committees would develop annual scopes of work, go through an annual planning process. And the city administration and city council will be represented on both committees. Whereas Amy is the team lead for the downtown development committee, Audrey's the team lead for the Tiffens Community Development Committee. And of course, we're going to collaborate and funnel everything up to Charlene at the big picture and at the overview. So a lot of collaboration and partnership moving forward, and we are, we are committed to make sure that Tiffens does its part. For, to make sure that we are using the plan. In addition, what we've done is we've gone through the 164 strategies and seen how many really fall within TSEP's activity. And there are 109 of those that are specifically things we either lead or participate actively in. And we've assigned them to one of our team members that are going to kind of make sure that, you know, they know what's going on. Participate in the committee done or leading. Because it's, you know, a lot of community development. Audrey's got the line share with 40. Amy Reinhardt's got about 29. I got about 21. Nick's got 10 and Carol Curran has nine, mostly in the workforce development area. So in a nutshell, in summary, if you approve this plan, we're ready to get hopping on it. We're ready to start implementing. The legendary, and I'll close with this, the legendary coach, basketball coach John Wooden is credited with saying, good things take time, as they should. We shouldn't expect good things to happen overnight. This plan has indeed taken time, three whole years, but it is indeed a good plan. I want to thank you, Tiffens City Council, for your patience, for your financial support. And your willingness to partner with the other jurisdictions. For your ongoing commitment to planning in this community. I firmly believe this plan will leave a positive legacy for the next generation. And commend it to your attention for adoption and acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions for Mr. Zach? Nice presentation, a lot of great information in there. I also, I always appreciate your enthusiasm and it helps, it goes a long way. So anything else? Any other questions? Mayor, do you have anything else?
Do you want me to have anything else? No, I think that does it, Mr. President. Thank you, David. Thank you, Charlene. Long time in the making, and it's exciting to finally have this plan completed. I hope city council will act expeditiously to get things approved and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, clerk of council, Anne Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are now under written communications. Council clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have finance director's request for legislation number F-20-36 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84. To allow for the recording of the CARES Act coronavirus relief funds and to amend ordinance 20-78.
Request for legislation, F-20-36 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared tonight under ordinance 20-83.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-20-37 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to appropriate funds into the Parks Department budget.
Request for Legislation F-20-37 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Legislation has been prepared this evening under Ordinance 20-85.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-20-38 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 in order to increase expenses in unemployment insurance in the Police, Court, and Sewer Maintenance Department budget.
Request for Legislation F-20-38 will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Legislation has been prepared this evening under Ordinance 20-86.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone from the attending public wishes to speak to council, please be recognized by Kathy Moore and address your comments to the Council President. Kathy, do we have anyone?
We do not, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to resolutions and ordinances. Resolutions. Excuse me. Councilman Gillig.
Mr. President, can we move on to motions first?
We have a motion?
I actually have two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I probably should mention that.
We'll back up. We're now under motions. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move that Council President assign to a committee the possibility of installing recycling containers in downtown Tiffin, particularly with the implementation of DORA and the plastic cups. Just might be something that would be worth a little further exploration.
All right. I'm going to assign your request to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee. Councilman Schuff. Is there anything else? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also so move that Council President Fote assign to a committee Dr. Megan McBride's email, which council received on July 26th regarding the Eight Can't Wait platform. When we had the Black Lives Matter protest, I was just so grateful that Chief Stevens was down there, and, you know, he was talking with some of the folks about the issues with George Floyd's tragic passing, and he talked about some of the things that were procedurally incorrect. So knowing the fantastic police department we have, the great leadership we have, I would imagine a lot of these things are covered already, but it would be nice to have a committee meeting where we could discuss these things and just get more information out there. So my motion, to make it a long story short, is to ask Council President to sign Dr. McBride's email for the Eight Can't Wait Committee to a committee.
All right, I'm going to take Councilman Gillig's suggestion and apply that to the Law and Community Planning Committee. Councilwoman Boyle. Okay, any other motions? All right, now, we're under resolutions.
Resolution Number 20-28, introduced by Ben Gillig. Resolution strongly urging Ohio Governor Mike DeWine to keep Ohio open for business during the COVID-19 pandemic, utilizing precautions to limit the spread of the virus.
This is the first and only reading of Resolution 20-28. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for council adoption of Resolution 20-28.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution 20-28. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 20-28. Is there any discussion? One question I had, Law Director, if this passes, do we have a list of representatives in addition to the governor that we're going to send this to?
Section 3 of the resolution does direct the clerk to send it to not only the governor, but also sending it to the interim director of the Department of Health, our state senator, Dave Burke, and our state representative, Bill Reinecke. So that's in the legislation. There's no reason you couldn't, though, publish it to anyone else that you choose.
Okay. Is there anyone else we'd want to send it to? Anyone? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be extraordinarily grateful if we could publish this resolution on the City of Tiffin government page, as well on Facebook and social media.
Okay. Anyone else? I also want to thank the Law Director for his time and work in crafting this. He was, we had a great discussion when we talked about it, and I think he did just a fantastic job in putting this all together and putting our thoughts to paper. So thank you, Brent, very much for all your hard work. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote, please.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yannatuno.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilman Schuff.
Yes.
Resolution 20-28 passes with a vote of seven to zero. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance Number 20-77, introduced by Bridgette Boyle. Ordinance enacting Chapter 343 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, allowing and regulating golf cart use within the City of Tiffin.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 20-77. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I would like to ask for council's passage of Ordinance 20-77.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass Ordinance 20-77. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 20-77. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe I'm going to be voting no on 2077 for the two following reasons. One, two weeks ago at the Zoom meeting, I was almost begging the constituents here in the Second Ward to let me know their thoughts. I can't read their mind. I only heard from four people in the Second Ward on this golf cart issue. Two were in favor of it, two were against it. And I guess they're going to leave it to my best judgment. So based on what Chief Stevens, I didn't feel that he was warm and fuzzy with these golf carts in downtown Tiffin. So for that reason, I'm going to be a no vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I mean, just talking with some people, obviously through the barber shop, and some people within the universities and stuff, I know they found this to be beneficial if they need to, you know, shuttle people back and forth either from the Heminger Center or, you know, throughout use with the colleges. Me personally, I don't see a problem with it if somebody's going to go through all the hoops and get all the, you know, things that we are making it necessary to be street legal in Tiffin. I just don't see a big problem with it. I mean, I know Chief Stevens is worried about, you know, being on the wrong side of an accident, but, I mean, heck, why won't we eliminate all the scooters and motorcycles if we're worried about that? I think that's the wrong way to look at it. I think we can bring people to downtown. And if, I mean, I think it'd be a good thing. I would keep a short leash on it, kind of like we are with DORA, and keep an eye on it, and if it starts creating problems, then, you know, maybe look at it in the future. And that would be my thought on it.
Thank you. Councilman Leopard.
I thank you, Mr. President. Scooters and motorcycles are not low-speed vehicles, and colleges always receive special dispensation for golf cart use in transportation, especially during graduation ceremonies. I have talked to a professional golf cart person, one who customizes golf carts, one who rents golf carts in large quantities for special gatherings and so forth. I spoke with him over a year ago when this came up, and asked what his opinion was. And his opinion was golf carts do not belong on streets. And this comes from a professional who makes his living renting golf carts and selling golf carts. Only one time have I ever voted against a safety service, a safety service director's opinion. I'm sorry I didn't did that. I have regretted it, and I will support Chief Stevens in this ordinance, and I will not be an affirmative vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, seeing none, clerk will call the vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gillig.
No.
Councilwoman Yannatuno.
No.
Councilman Jones.
No.
Councilman Leopard. Councilman Leopard.
No.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Schuff.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-77 fails with a vote of four to three.
Ordinance Number 20-80, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance responding to petition number 103, vacating an alley in First Highland Edition, running south from First Avenue in the Second Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 20-80.
Ordinance Number 20-82, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance amending the requirements for applicants to become the city's chief of police.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 20-82.
Ordinance Number 20-83, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 and Ordinance 20-78 to change fund numbers and appropriate $366,062.50 within Fund 296 CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund for qualifying expenses under the grant and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 20-83. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, before I make a motion, may I ask the mayor to kind of give a reminder as to what the Corona CARES Act dollars will be able to reimburse the city for, and perhaps maybe venture a guess as to our expenses thus far with what we've needed to adjust.
Mayor?
Yes, so CARES Act funding cannot be used as a revenue replacement. It can only be used to cover expenses that are related to coronavirus items. So at this time, so we've been working with the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Office of Budget Management, as well as other cities, trying to wade through this document, because if you go through the CARES Act, there's just all sorts of information in there. The one thing that is entirely clear is you cannot use it as a revenue replacement. So we know we are down since April 1st and the shutdown, we're down almost $600,000 of revenue. Unfortunately, this $366,000 cannot be used for those items. However, we are confident that we can use this item, or these dollars, to any expenses that are related to coronavirus, including salaries of first responders who may be going to calls that are related to coronavirus. The Office of Budget Management in the state of Ohio and many states have taken the impression that communities do not have to log every single hour, and first responders such as EMS may be presumed to be coronavirus-related. So we are, at this initial point, quite confident we will be able to use the full $366,000 to offset expenditures related to coronavirus here in Tiffin. Many states are doing that already. The direction that we've been given by the Municipal League and the State Department of Budget Management indicates that that is fair game and is an appropriate use of expenses. So unless we get direction otherwise, we should be able to use all $366,000 of this to help offset expenses. Now, of course, that eats a little over half of the amount that we are currently down in our revenue. So like we said, it's not meant to be a revenue replacement, but it is helping us cover a lot of these expenses. So we are quite confident at this point we'll be able to use all $366,000. And if the little over a million dollars that was appropriated to Seneca County is not used by other entities in Seneca County, we will get another bite at the apple and be able to apply for additional funding. So this should be the minimum we see. We could potentially see even additional funding if not all of it is used, for example, the Seneca County Commissioners, all of our different townships, other cities, villages, et cetera. So we will find out later this year how much of that money has been used and how much, if any, will be available for the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, et cetera, to apply for additional funding.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that explanation. To that end, I would like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 20-83.
We have a motion for the suspension of the three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 20-83. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yannatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to keep this clean, for lack of better terms. We six of us voted on Ordinance 2078 on July 6th. We passed that six to zero, and this may be an administrative deal here to set up Fund 350 on this coronavirus. And now we're amending the Ordinance 2078 that I voted for. And it sounds like, to me, shouldn't we just eliminate somehow 2078 and supersede it with 2083? Wouldn't that be cleaner, or am I missing something?
Law Director.
Yeah, I mean, we're essentially doing what you're saying by amending the document and changing the fund number. So I think it accomplishes the same purpose, Councilman Jones.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I've reviewed this, and the Finance Director's reviewed it. You know, I know she had some contact with others, and we believe that this will make the proper direction by council, so that whenever auditors come back and review the use of those funds, they'll be satisfied with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further comments, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash eighty-three passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash eighty-four introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio to Ohio Power Company or related company for an electric line and facilities at the city's water pollution control center and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash eighty-four. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I will ask for suspension of city councils' three reading rule and passage ordinance number twenty dash eighty-four.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend and pass, uh, suspend the three reading rule and pass ordinance twenty dash eighty-four. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this request is a very small part of a fourteen million dollar project. It is our comp, part of our comprehensive sewer separation program. We need to continue to move forward without delay. These improvements are required by the Ohio EPA and we are under a strict deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash eighty-four passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash eighty-five introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the two thousand twenty budget ordinance nineteen dash eighty-four to appropriate donations and a grant totaling seven thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents to the Parks Department budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash eighty-five. Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. As Council Clerk Forrest mentioned, we received generous donations and a grant. And we would like to put that to good use immediately. To that end, I would like to ask for suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash eighty-five.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash eighty-five. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for transparency's sake, this ordinance twenty dash eighty-five, if I'm reading it correctly, is a three-part ordinance. We only discussed the one part of the seven thousand two hundred seventy-five from the Seneca County Parks District to Shackelhoff Park. We didn't talk about the other two sections of that. Do we need to discuss that or is that not that important? I guess maybe I didn't make myself clear. This is a three-part ordinance. I only heard us talk about the one portion of the seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollar one. And I have no secrets here. I'll be glad to read these other two parts if that's necessary.
Go ahead. What are, what are the other two parts you're talking about?
The donation of seventy-five dollars from Sean and Stephanie Smith for the installation of a park sign for Memorial and two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents from the Tiffin Am Vets for the Parks Department. I just wanted the community, the public, everyone to know what we're voting on.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I saw with the installation of the sign from the generous donation from Sean and Stephanie Smith. Does Mr. Mayor or City Minister Thornton, does Bryce have any, any plans or any earmarks? I'd see this is going into property and equipment. I know Bryce does wonders over there, but just wondering if he had any particular uses in mind.
Which specific costs, Councilman Gillig?
Oh, I am sorry. It's, it's actually right in there. They're going to seal Shekelhoff Park Trail.
Yes, yeah, the seventy-two hundred dollars, correct. Yeah, they're going to reseal that trail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just while we're talking to this, I guess I'm just going to flat out ask the other six council members. Am I way off base by bringing up some of these, what y'all might think are minor issues? I think the public needs to know exactly what we're voting on. And I would just like a little input from one of the six of you.
Does anyone want to comment to Mr. Jones? Councilman Gillig.
Uh, Councilman Jones, no, I, I, I don't disagree. I, I think those are, are great points to, to bring up.
Councilman Jones.
Then I'll just thank Councilman Gillig for that comment. Thank you.
And I apologize. I was reading off the ordinance. I was not reading off, off the letter, so. Good point. Okay, is there anything else? Seeing no further comment, clerk will call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash eighty-five passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash eighty-six introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the two thousand twenty budget ordinance nineteen dash eighty-four in order to increase expenses in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars for unemployment insurance in the police, court, and sewer maintenance department budgets.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash eighty-six. Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. To that end, since we are required to have the funds needed to, to make these payments, I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash eighty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and passage of ordinance twenty dash eighty-six. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's four parts to this, but the other three are very small compared. And I guess I, maybe this is a question for the mayor if it's okay with the president of council. Understood, Mayor Monks in the past say that the police department has saved approximately seventy-five thousand dollars by furloughs, layoffs, et cetera, and et cetera. One of these four parts is twenty, additional twenty-five thousand going into the unemployment for the police department. Does that mean the net savings is fifty thousand dollars? Is that how I'm understanding this?
Yes and no, because we still have to receive our reimbursement then because part of the additional funding that was provided by the state and federal government companies, local governments, et cetera, get a rebate on fifty percent of the cost of unemployment. So we'll be getting an additional amount back. So no, that is not the final number. Once we have the final number, we'll get it to you. It should be greater than fifty thousand still, the net change.
Councilman Schuff? He lit up. I just, does anybody else have a comment? Jones, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mayor Monks for explaining that. And again, for transparency's sake, I said this was a four-part ordinance. And I said the other three were small, but every small amount needs to be communicated. Five thousand went to the police dispatchers, forty-five hundred went for the court system, sixty-five hundred went for sewer maintenance. And we talked about the twenty-five thousand for the police department. So it was a four-part ordinance. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schuff?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash eighty-six passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, can I please schedule my long community planning meeting at this time?
Sure.
Um, okay, Steve and Danny, are you available this Thursday at four P M. to have a meeting via Zoom?
I will not be available Thursday.
Of course.
Stop it.
Okay, um, what about Monday at three, the tenth?
I, I'm working.
Okay. Can you, when, when are you free, I guess? Let's work.
Probably could do, um, did, did, do break it up? Maybe like the twelfth? Would that work?
That's good for me.
What, what time?
Um, I am, I'm off the twelfth, so I can do any time.
Okay, um.
Bridget?
Oh, yep.
Uh, if we had an early meeting, I would be available on the twelfth. You know, like three o'clock or four o'clock or three o'clock, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I can do, I can do three. That's fine. I can move some things around. Kathy, would you mind scheduling that for three P M. on August twelfth?
That actually works better for my schedule as well, Bridget. So three o'clock on the twelfth.
Yes, thank you. And would you mind sending an invite to everyone on this meeting? Well, I seem to always overlook that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to announce a long community planning meeting for Wednesday, August twelfth to discuss the possibilities for the city's upcoming Halloween trick or treat due to COVID nineteen as well as Meghan McBride's email regarding the eight can't wait campaign. And any business to come before the committee, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We're making us look bad. Just kidding.
No, she never ma, she makes us look great. Anything else? Councilman Schuff.
Yeah, Council President, thank you. Um, just wanted to get with you and then Councilman Gillig here as far as his request goes for looking into the Dora cups and recyclables. I thought this was correct, but somebody just confirmed it with me. We've already looked into this. The Dora cups are a number five recyclable. It cannot be recycled. So the committees that we've had in the past, when we initially started this whole search for exploring of the Dora, it ends up being more work than we have to pay somebody to go through and divvy up the trash, the recyclables, divide it all up. It just, it wasn't worth the time or effort or manpower. If somebody else would like to come up with a better suggestion, that's fine. But as I was reminded by one of my committee members, we've already explored that option and I like where your heads at, but it just wasn't feasible.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Councilman Gillig?
Honestly, no. I'd still like to, to maybe meet and just brainstorm. I mean, I imagine it might have been discussed before I was on council. It could be something that I'd be delighted to look into. You know, I don't know what grants may be available out there or if there'd be something to do with Rumkey. I just, I think it's worth a, a further discussion.
Okay, Councilman Schuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you heard me correctly or not, but the cups, they can't be recycled. They're a number five.
Well, yeah, but we still have, you know, twenty ounce bottles and, and cans and things of that nature. And you know, it's recycling something that's very near and dear to my heart. And I'd like to think it is for the community as well. And we're lucky enough to have the recycling program with Rumkey and just keeping what we can out of landfills.
Councilman Schuff.
I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand. I was just moving.
Okay. All right. I'll tell you what, let's, Ben, why don't you and I get together and we can discuss this a little bit further.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Leopard had his hand up as well.
Okay, Councilman Leopard.
Well, I was just thinking bottles and cans aren't really part of the Dora and.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Well, just my, my, my final comment tonight, I want to thank all of you for paying attention to the email that I sent out. Y'all look great. Y'all sounded good. So keep up the good work and you're all a good looking, intelligent group. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Our adjourned.
Good night. God, Bridget.